Want to do a quick sound check to see Kendra Dickinson, can you hear me? Anybody online, can you hear me? It's exciting times.
Kendra has her hand raised.
Texting, one, two, three.
Kendra, can you hear?
Can she unmute herself?
Can you unmute?
One, two, three.
Oh.
Kendra, can you hear?
Oh. That's gonna be annoying. Another sound check. It's not fun.
Well, I can hear you, that's on the mic, so you're okay.
Right.
Kendra says she can't hear.
Oh, she can.
Oh, she can.
Fantastic, maybe she just can't unmute herself. Okay, well, if you can hear, then fantastic. All right, we are, we've called to order the meeting. Reminder to folks, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast through our friends at Stirling Lancaster Community Television. I'll do a roll call. Mr. Allison.
Here.
Mr. Gifford.
Here.
Mr. Carrigan, here. Uh, okay. We have minutes for our meeting of July the 15th, 2024, for review and take action on. Is there a motion?
I submitted a number of amendments. I don't know if they have been updated yet or not.
So I will say, I, the, Kathy made any grammatical corrections that you suggested, but substantive and interpretive is not her responsibility.
All right, let me pull up my notes and go through that.
So you're not prepared at this point to approve the minutes?
I would like to get some changes made.
Okay, so, and as I said, pretty, if you have changes to the minutes, if you can inform the chair and then we can work to, we can do them here in the meeting if you've got a list, but Kathy's not able to make anything other than grammatical corrections. Spelling of Moffett Street was one of yours, understood. But the person who writes up the minutes isn't there to interpret things, they're there to record the sum and substance of what happened, not to transcribe it either.
All right, thank, thank you. I'm still trying to, the last time I brought changes to the meeting, I was requested to email them and then...
But you didn't send them to me, you sent them to Kathy Rocco.
I thought that was what I was supposed to do.
Kathy made the changes.
Made the grammatical ones.
Yes, the grammatical changes, she made all the grammatical changes. There was a comment, I think you had asked a question or asked that the tape be verified, which, which she did, and then she asked me to watch it a second time with her, and so the comments that were said that were from, regarding the dog hearing from the complainants were correct, so there were no changes that would be warranted for that. And then there were, there was a comment, the last two in your email, which she had said, you know, those were substantive changes that you would need to discuss with the board because...
What were those two?
Okay, I'll cover it. So skipping over what I, I trust are all the grammatical things, I suggested that the minutes directly note that Stephen Mudge had clarified that he is not the owner of the dog. I don't know if that's considered editorial.
Ah, yes, that was corrected.
That was corrected, thank you.
Yes, sir, yep.
Um, and then the minutes state, Mr. Mudge had explained that the dog has had some behavioral problems due to exposure to a rescue dog that he had taken in. It was my impression that the dog with the problem was the rescue dog.
No, so we went back and reviewed the tape.
Okay, so I, good, thank you. And then I did not recall Mr. and Mrs. Kirkpatrick stating that they do not believe that the owner is a responsible dog owner, and you're saying that, in fact, that was what, okay, so it's classic case, listening, observing, and got something slightly different. Moving on to, on page four of the minutes, I don't know if this would be considered editorial, but I know what I presented and what was in the minutes, I felt did not represent what I presented. What I presented was that the highest, that Lancaster's the highest single-family tax bill as a percentage of property value. And the minutes simply stated highest property tax rate, and I, that is not the language that I used.
So I will say, all this would, and we discussed this at the last meeting, a lot of this would be helped if you had shared your goals in advance with us and in writing so that we would have that material, and we weren't given that courtesy, so a lot of this was based on what they listened to on the tape. If there's a clarification that you, if there's language clarification, the other thing is when you're making amendments to the minutes, I'd like you to, and this goes to all of us, come with an amendment, not just to say, that's not what I meant to say. Like, I need to have a, I would like to replace this sentence with this, make a case for it that gets approved.
I will make an amendment. I move that on page four, where it states, actually, let me find that, so I probably should include a little bit more, bear with me.
And just for the future, if there are these things, bring them in advance because we're eating up a meeting and we have folks scheduled for a hearing, or for the result of a hearing, so. You know, in the interest of time, why don't we move on? If you can write up amendments as appropriate, and then we can consider this later. I just don't want to waste too many more people's time.
I appreciate that.
It's fine wasting our time, but I don't want to waste the townspeople's time. Okay, so we will table that hopefully for later this meeting so we can have those minutes approved. Scheduled appearances in public hearings, we have the deliberation conclusion for the July 15th, 2024 nuisance and/or dangerous dog matter. I open it to the board for discussion. Either of you wish to kick it off?
I'm happy to.
You don't need to, if you don't want to. I certainly am willing to offer my thoughts, but I tend to let my colleagues speak first, if you wish.
I appreciate that. Fundamentally, it seems to me that the question before us is, first and foremost, whether to require the animal question to be put down.
That's, that's, would be, that's the question that the complaint is asking us to respond to, yes?
Yes. I found the testimony of the current animal control officer to be persuasive and that the, there is opportunity to, with the appropriate control of the animal in place and with the neutering, as was discussed, to proceed without putting the animal down.
Yep. I mean, I would, I would argue there's two questions we have to answer. Are we going to be responding, like, how are we going to respond to the complaint's request? And if not agreeing to put the animal, or have the animal put down, what, that was a recommendation made by the animal control officer, if we don't agree in entirety with that, what do we agree to and what do we recommend? Do you have thoughts? A tree of thoughts.
Yeah, it's hard, never would have thought this would be in front of the board. My, my vote will be led by fear. My vote is led by fear of what would happen if this would have been like a six-year-old. And, and, you know, that may not be the right thing to do. I don't envy any, any individual, I don't envy the dog owner, I don't envy this board. We all have to follow our heart as hard as that may be, so that's what I got.
So to review the recommendation, and Everett, you're here because you're our public tapes commissioner, I know you work closely with the animal officers, can I?
She's here, too.
Oh, she is, oh, here they are. Sorry, hi, sorry, I didn't see you. So I want to read back from our minutes what I believe your recommendation is and tell me whether or not that's accurate. That, that options are available by state statute, change access to the door, securely confined to the house, if the dog is outside in a pen, rules must be followed, that if the dog is required to be outside and off property or out of control and not in a pen, a strong muzzle or leash might be used, and the dog should be neutered, which had already been scheduled. Would that, does that give the sum and substance of your recommendation?
Yes, that's correct.
And so to ask a clarification on the muzzle piece and the strong leash, leash piece, was that a recommendation for if they're off prop, like, out of, if there were a pen on property that was secure and the pet couldn't get out of it, did that, the muzzle apply to that, or was it just when it was, I interpreted it as when it was taken off property if there was need?
Correct, off property is, the leash, the strength of the leash in the recommendation by your people.
No, it's just for off property, not out of the house, got it? That's what I, I heard, I just want to make sure. I heard you correctly. My inclination is, how many years you been doing this for, I think, how many years, 20-something?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I know I'm not a subject matter expert on a lot of things, and particularly not animal control. I can barely control my dog from barking at my husband, so I tend to go with the professionals. So my inclination would be to support the recommendations of the animal control officer.
I, if the time is appropriate, I would be happy to...
Well, I want, I want to make sure, well, we can have a discussion during a motion, but is there any further discussion, or do you want to move to motion? We can do either way. Is there any further discussion?
No, it's just hard.
It is hard.
Sucks, the situation sucks.
Yes. All right.
I move that we adopt the recommendation of the animal control officer in this situation.
Kate, is that the proper, I think that's roughly proper terminology?
Yes.
It gives us some substance of what we wish.
Yes, the minutes will reflect the recommendation.
Is there a second? I will second.
You possibly read that exactly how the animal control officer stated that?
Uh, so I will read what's in our minutes and then you can, I'm pointing around you, Mr. Mudge, to Ms. Tower, to just verify again that this is your, your suggestion, that, and what the state statute rules relative to the leash strength, et cetera. That there should be change to access to the door, which we all acknowledge, there was a gate and all that stuff, and make sure the dog can be securely confined in the house. And if the dog is outside and that can be securely confined in a pen, rules must be followed, and then a strong muzzle and leash might be required outdoors off property, and that the dogs, oh, sorry, with the leash, and muzzle and leash, and then the dog should be neutered, which I know you had scheduled, but you were...
Dog is neutered.
All right, thank you. So that's, is that clear, what, what the recommendation was? And I've got it right, right?
No, correct.
And that was your interpretation as well? Yours as well?
That's what I understand of the recommendations, yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If there's not, those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Mr. Allison?
No.
So let the record reflect that the select board has agreed with Ms. Tower's recommendation, and Ms. Mudge, we ask you to work with the, with the animal officer to make sure you're in compliance with the...
And we said that again, you know, the notice we got here, the owner of the dog is not on this notice.
And we, that was the notice from the hearing?
This was for today, meaning I was not notified.
Again, the owner of the dog is not on here.
We will, we will tackle that, I don't know why is the...
I still believe that this should be a 10-day notice when you have a public hearing as such, that this is.
This is not a hearing, they closed it.
This is just our, yeah, this is just the conclusion. This is just us stating our, it's our deliberation and our answer, it's not a public...
It's just an agenda item, technically, I mean, the chair has recognized you, but you're, you're not even...
It's not a, it, it, we would have, we would have had to re-notice a hearing, call it to orders, totally separate from this meeting, and go to a whole other, as we did the last time when you were here on July 15th. This was just for the board because we got all that information on July 15th and wanted time to sit within ourselves and be able to make a determination. So this isn't an extension of the hearing or even a hearing of itself, it was just our deliberation and answer.
And the executive assistant from my office did copy both of you on the email, and it's the, yes, she did, I, I have it, I can... No, we have it right here, it does not have my email on there.
This part of our agenda is over, but let's make sure that we have the proper communications.
This is twice, so, I just want...
There's hope, there's hope we don't have to deal with this ever again, but let's make sure we have the right information. Okay, thank you. So, next item on the agenda, sorry. Thank you very much. Public comment, period. So as we all know, public comment is available to folks. You are able to offer public comment up to two minutes. If you're in the room, please stand randomly where there was a podium, there was an issue with the owl not picking up the podium. And, and if you're online and wish to, throw up your digital hand and you'll be recognized after the folks in the room, or the folk in the room. Take it away.
Roy Reetek, 125 Harvard Road, speaking as a private citizen.
Oh, and Roy, I'll wave like this when I stop the timer, when you're at one minute, I'll give you...
Regarding the recent Tax Fairness Committee report delivered to the Select Board, 7:15, I would make the following comments. Regarding reverse mortgages, I recently became aware that AARP, a trusted advocacy and advisory group for seniors, makes the following recommendation. AARP does not endorse any reverse mortgage lender or product, but wants seniors to have information needed to make informed decisions about these loans. This information slash education type of recommendation by AARP is similar in intent to the Tax Fairness Committee recommendation on page 24 of their report as follows. Taxpayers should consider discussing reverse mortgage as a possible financial option with financial, legal, and tax advisors as well as family. In both cases, reverse mortgages are not recommended, but learning about them is so that seniors have the best information for their circumstances. Regarding the committee's report, the committee was formed at the request of the voters at the May 2023 annual town meeting to do an independent investigation, analysis, and deliver a report. The independence of the requested committee, of review and the assessment, and the free flow of that information from their report is critical to voters having reliable information and being able to make the best decisions regarding their situations. Thus, because it provides valuable educational information and is well-documented independent assessment that was requested by the voters, I recommend that this report be made widely available to the voters. Thank you.
Anybody online? Seeing none, public comments closed. Next item on the agenda, review and adoption of disaster recovery plan. Kate?
We received some edits that were grammatical in nature, so thank you to everybody, and those have been made. But new copy was sent out. There was nothing substantive that was changed, addresses and some spelling corrections, et cetera. So thank, thank you to all three of you for taking the time to go through that, and obviously Commissioner Moody is here to answer any questions that you have relative to anything substance there, or I can, but we are looking for the board's, hopefully affirmative vote to accept this so we can...
Sure.
Move on.
I move to adopt the updates to the disaster recovery plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to adopt the updates for the disaster recovery plan. Is there any discussion?
First, congratulations, I know a lot of work went into this. This is a vital document. I appreciated the opportunity to review it. I spent many hours on this document, and this, I'm sure it will continue to evolve and approve, but it's a, it seems to me a great foundational document, so thank you for your hard work, all the hard work that I could clearly see in this document.
Thank you, as always, Everett and Kate and the whole team in town for putting it together, so, well done. Mudge and seconded, all those in favor, signal I would be saying aye. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did we go out of order, did we miss number one?
No disaster recovery plan?
No, no, administration budget and policy approval of state primary warrant, am I looking at the wrong one?
I'm looking at the amended, it was amended August 2nd. amended August 2nd, 9:32 AM.
Who's got the right one? July 8th, 402 P D F.
July 8th, you're looking wrong. Yeah, this is, this is August 2nd, 2024, at 9:00.
Which is the right one?
I'm looking, hold on.
Agenda 8524 amended PDF. Does it say asterisk, which makes me think it's part of the amended one? So what I do is I go to the town website, I go to town meeting's calendar.
Yeah, so I did, and then I found that amended one.
Aren't you clicking on this one here?
I know, I did.
Oh, yeah, no, he's right, approval of state primary warrant.
So I went to the furthest one to the packet, because it had it all in there. Ah, you did not miss it, I missed it, because I clicked on the wrong button.
Which will be e-signed when I send it.
Sure.
Pending your affirmative vote.
Standby. Wasn't that interesting? Why wouldn't that then be in the new packet? That's fine. All right, excuse me, now that we've done that disaster, that was, do you know how important it was to get to the disaster recovery before we got to anything else?
If we didn't.
If we didn't, there might have been disaster, and we couldn't have recovered from it. So now we did. My goodness, we dealt with that. All right, approval of the state primary warrant to be held, do you feel safer, Everett, now that you have that done? Yeah, we can't talk about elections, so we have that planned. The state primary warrant to be held on September 3rd, 2024, at the Town Hall Auditorium from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Is there a motion to approve the state primary warrant?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing on, all those in favor, signal I would be saying aye. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Okay.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, back, back on the important, I need wet signatures, so if I can just pass these around, this is for the disaster. Yes, I do.
What do you want, blue ink?
Nope, does the color matter?
Oh, okay, I've had somebody tell me it does.
People do prefer blue from wet ink.
Hey, no idea what it is.
We'll just use this one, we know it's blue.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. Next item.
Yes, on warrants and that kind of stuff.
Yes, it does. On contracts and things like that, we always sign that. Okay, fantastic, there you are, there you are.
Thank you.
Next review, I'm gonna check both agendas.
Thank you.
Review and adoption of Tax Fairness Committee final report, Select Board Distribution Preference Guidance. It was a fantastic presentation that was given at our last meeting. My concern about reverse mortgages remains. I appreciate AARP's guidance, but they even say it's not a, not something that people would recommend, but it is something people need to know about, which I understand. I don't know that, and I, I, I don't know that our, that the way it's phrased in the proposed document suggests that they're not recommended, and they're just there for informational purposes, and that's what concerns me about them, and I don't think they're necessarily relevant to the, to the task at hand. I would also remind folks, the Tax Fairness Committee was asked for, by the Select Board, who presented it to the town meeting for approval to create it, so it's not as if it was outside of this board's focus, or solely independent. It was determined that we wanted the Tax Fairness Committee for many reasons, you guys did a fantastic job, but I, I don't typically respond to public comment, but your comments a few moments ago suggested as if it was wholly created by town meeting, it was at our warrant recommendation. So my concern remains the same about mentioning reverse mortgages in the, in the report, and I, my preference would be to have that removed. As for distribution, I think we should get it out to folks, it should be on our webpage, it should be at the library, it should be at the community center. We should be mindful of printing costs, as it's a large document, but I would yield to Kate to find the best methods, Kate or Kelly, find the best methods, but I, I think, but for that substantive concern, and I don't want to spend too much time on it, because I appreciate the fantastic work the committee did, but that's my one concern, other than that, I think it should be, should go out far and wide. But that's, those are my thoughts. Fellow members, thoughts?
I'm, I'm definitely in favor of the distribution as you propose. I am of the opinion that our taxpayers are intelligent people and can sort out the reverse mortgage. I don't have the same level of concern that you have about the reverse mortgages.
I also want to be very clear that I believe our taxpayers are intelligent people, too. I'm sure you didn't mean to suggest that I didn't think that.
I certainly did not mean to suggest that. Simply trying to say, I have confidence that people will not interpret this as Lancaster trying to sell reverse mortgages. And I therefore support your proposal for the distribution.
So from my perspective, I'm grateful of the hard work, also grateful and in full support of increasing the senior tax abatement, I think it goes by 30%. I think it's dangerous to leave in the reverse mortgage financial advice in there, especially what Roy said about, you know, AARP. I just don't think the town should be giving financial advice. I also, I also want to, I want to project a little bit, not to the Tax Fairness Committee, but project out loud. At the end of the, the last meeting, I had asked Roy, you know, what, what is the message, and the Tax Fairness Committee is dissolved, but what is the Tax Fairness Committee's message to seniors in Lancaster who can't afford to stay in their generational Lancaster homes? I had not gotten an answer to that. And my projection out into the world is it makes me sad that we don't have an answer for that. And, and when they, when the seniors come to me, I'm gonna say, well, you can work 30% more to get some more money, but other than that, Lancaster has no answer for you, right? Lancaster does not have a plan for you. The current plan is, we need to, in my opinion, we need to diversify our tax base, reduce residential tax burden, overall, that should reduce the overall impact to fixed income residents, that's the goal, but other than that, I don't see and don't feel a mechanism to make life easier on those who most need it. That's not to say the senior center and all of the work down there isn't impactful. I'm just, it makes me sad and that, you know, that just might be a feeling that we all deal with and, you know, that's where we are. But anyway, that's my reaction to where we are with the Tax Fairness Committee's report. And I am grateful for all the work that they did, but at the same time, you know, some of the answers that it came to are just, you know, you want a silver bullet to solve everyone's problems and it just may not be there.
Right. And I was like, when conceiving of the idea of the Tax Fairness Committee a while back, some of the goals I was hoping would be examined or achieved, such as looking at means testing or means analysis so that those who are in their homes. And it started with conversations I had when I ran for office here, was talking to seniors who had lived in their home for a long time, didn't have a mortgage but still had taxes, didn't have kids in the schools, used very little town services for the work that, for the amount of money they were paying, and finding a way to look at their capability of paying taxes and finding a way to adjust our tax rate for those in those circumstances, sort of a sliding fee scale, if you will. And I know there was discussion of it and then the committee opted not to opine on it. I was, so that, that sort of, those types of solutions, I would have loved to see more on. I think it's a little, the reason why the reverse mortgage thing hits me so much is it basically says to somebody, so if you want to stay here, take everything you've earned and saved, earned and saved, and pay it back to the mortgage company, you know? The concept of being house poor and house rich, I think seems due respect to be a little tone deaf to those who are poor, house or otherwise. And I don't want to send a message to folks that the only way you should stay in Lancaster is if you re-mortgage your house again by doing a reverse mortgage and then lose what you might have thought you'd leave to your great nephew or your kids or your, I mean, it's, you know, I don't know that it's our job to tell them how to spend that hard-earned asset that they've acquired. I just thought it would be a great opportunity for us as a town to find a way to allow those people to age with dignity in their homes. I agree with a lot of the recommendations here. We've been all saying this for a long time, diversifying our tax base is the best way to keep all residential property taxes as low as possible. Building up that part of our economy is significant. But putting that piece of the burden on those lower-income taxpayers, I just can't quite settle on. And it's not as if the Tax Fairness Committee opined in a negative way in that regard. They just, it just seemed to be something that was discussed and then not addressed in the final report, which is fine. It is just different from what I was expecting would be a recommendation or a result from the committee. So, I, again, I think it's fantastic, I said this at the last meeting, I think it's, for the most part, a fantastic report, very, very interesting. I don't know that it gets to all of the things I was hoping it did, but that's okay too. That's why you have committees, that's the interpretation of the great work that you all did. I have a real concern with, I do believe that the voters and taxpayers and residents are smart in town, but I also don't want to necessarily, when it appears in something like this, even if it's not under the word recommendation, it's got our seal and our name on it, which means we're, someone might, and not everybody doing reverse mortgages maybe on the up and up, and I don't want any taxpayer here in Lancaster to get hung up to dry because of anything we might have done. So, that's, I have a, I have a very strong concern about that. Had that not been in here, I would have voted to approve it unaltered already.
So, one thing, I don't, I'm assuming the Tax Fairness Committee considered it, but something that we need to remember and that all residents need to understand, and Steve, you brought it up, right? So, if you have a senior on fixed income living in a four-bedroom house who has to sell, guess who's buying that house? A family with 1.3 kids.
Right.
And 1.3 kids puts what burden on the town for schools?
An awful lot more than that, so.
Let me make up the number and say it's $50,000 a year.
1.3 kids?
Yeah.
More like 25 to 30.
It's about 38,000, 31 to 38,000 for children.
So, now, so now we have just lost $31,000 by not helping somebody stay in their home, right? So, I just, I don't understand that math. And, but I'm not, that's just me talking out loud. Tax Fairness Committee studied it. I'm sure there was reasons for it. But when seniors sell their home, seniors aren't buying it, right? It's gonna be families that are buying it and that's gonna put extra burden on our schools, which is gonna go flow right back into the assessment that we're gonna have into the town, so.
Yeah, look, I hope, I mean, I hope to be a senior in town one day.
One day, is that tomorrow or?
I heard there's not till September 2nd. And, but my parents were, and my dad not at a pension, my mother not at a pension, and they were relying on social security or their savings. Unfortunately, they both passed before they had that trouble, but they would not necessarily be able to stay in their home that they bought six months before I was born and that they loved and wanted to stay until they passed, which turns out they got what they wanted, sadly. But I think of families like that who just want to age in their home with dignity. And I, I know that a lot of the work that went into here will help families across Lancaster and help the town immensely if we adhere to a lot of these recommendations, so I am incredibly grateful. My big concern is, is the reverse mortgage piece. Had that not been in it at all, it would not be a concern of mine. And I look at you only because we haven't talked in a minute, but you don't need to say anything.
No, I definitely, just trying to get my thoughts fully combobulated. The first thing that comes to mind is that this report lists many options. And it also struck me, struck me that in terms of legal framework, that there weren't other options, at least not options that I'm aware of.
Other options for what?
For allowing seniors to stay in the home, other than the options that they listed. They listed many options. If there's another option that they missed, that hasn't come forward. I'm not aware of anybody having presented that.
I mean, discussing a sliding scale, even though we know the Commonwealth is considering, I mean, that, I think is something that we.
Well, there was certainly extensive discussion on that in February. And there was, as was mentioned in the, in the February presentation, and our.
No, like, I don't want to get bogged down in like all this, like, those are just my thoughts about what it was gonna be when it started. I'm fine with the way it came out.
Right.
Fine with it, except for the reverse mortgage inclusion in the report. I'm sorry, but this is just, yeah. That's why we have public comment at the beginning, and I appreciate your public comment at the beginning, but this is.
Although I know there is precedent for calling on an expert to.
That's, I appreciate you making him an expert, but I don't know that he is, so. Who was Chair of the committee?
Sure.
Keep going.
So, to me, the reverse mortgage is just one of all the options that were presented to remove that. It would almost be conspicuous. I'm not a fan of reverse mortgages. I doubt that I would ever recommend anybody take a reverse mortgage, but every situation is unique. It is an option.
Right. And our townspeople are very smart, as you've pointed out, and they probably know it's an option. I will say this, I'm not gonna vote for any publishing, spending money, publishing and copying any report. I'm one of three that includes reverse mortgages, so I'll just, I'll shortcut my part of the debate. I think it could be. I mean, it says right here, taxpayers should consider discussing reverse mortgages as a possible financial solution under a Tax Fairness Committee recommendation. As a possible financial option with financial, legal, and tax advisors. Yeah, sure, they should discuss, they should discuss a lot of things. I don't, to me, that is an unnecessary inclusion, and I believe reverse mortgages can be predatory, and I don't think the town should be putting their name on it. That's my opinion. I'm one of three. I can easily be voted down. But it took me a while to find the page I was looking for, but that's the one.
My other concern is in terms of the precedent it sets for people who put a lot of time and effort into a report, that we then edit it after the fact, after we've disbanded and so forth. I would have preferred to have provided this recommendation and then asked them to go back and.
I was very clear at the meeting that I did not want reverse mortgages as part of this, at the last meeting. I did not like reverse mortgages. I asked a lot of questions about reverse mortgages. It was the committee's request, appropriately so because it's an ad hoc committee, that once they released their report to us to be disbanded, so we followed the request that they had on their, on their item on the article or the agenda. Furthermore, we're not a rubber stamp as a committee. So, if we ask, which we did prior to your time on the board, the town meeting to consider creating a Tax Fairness Committee for certain purposes, the town meeting agreed with us. We then appointed the committee as appropriate. They then reported back to us. It's not our job just to say fine and stamp it, because then we wouldn't even include that process in the process, that part in the process. Our job, we have an obligation to the voters who sent us here and to those who didn't to consider the report, give them, give it our judgment and act appropriately.
To the extent that, you know, if this becomes a regular precedent, I can envision people who serve on committees saying, why should we put in the effort? The Select Board is just gonna override and overwrite and delete and strike and do whatever they want.
So, you overwrote, you made edits and comments on the disaster recovery plan. That was submitted to us. Should we have just rubber stamped that or should we have adhered to your recommendations and allowed you to have your voice, as you should as an elected member of this body?
I believe that that process is a completely different process now.
How so? We asked staff to put together a disaster recovery plan. We asked townspeople to sit on a committee, actually, they asked us to sit on a committee and we appointed them to committee with a task. The task was to give us a report, not to give us something that we can't have opine on. Our job is to represent the people. So, I don't think we can do it for a staff-led report and not a committee-led report that we frankly asked for it to be created. But again, that's my opinion, I'm just one of three.
And the town meeting voted, so I think the fact that they have.
The town meeting voted to create the committee at our request, then we, the town meeting, the town meeting voted to ask us to create the committee and appoint the committee. Just the town meeting voting does, we don't then say we have no responsibility in this matter. But maybe we have different.
I have a disagreement. I believe we should publish the report as is.
Why?
There's a lot of valuable information, people, we need to make that information available to them.
Are you recommending reverse mortgages to seniors in Lancaster?
As I stated, I am not a fan of reverse mortgages. I wouldn't recommend.
So, then why do you think that should be published and given to our residents?
Because it is one of the many options that is included in the report.
It doesn't include all the options. Like, it doesn't include the totality of all options. It specifically calls out reverse mortgages. I could, I can easily envision a senior going, well, you know, I know you're saying this, my financial advisor, but my town, I want to stay and this is what they're recommending I do. That doesn't sit well with me.
And this is discussed as a possible option with financial advisors. We all know, you turn on television and they talk about reverse mortgages and their financial advisors, they're gonna call one of those, and my guess would be that person is a financial advisor who will likely advise them to do a reverse mortgage. So, I just think it puts us in a dangerous position. I don't think legally dangerous position, but I, again, will restate what I've been saying now for more than a month or a few weeks. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pay to distribute something that has a recommendation for reverse mortgages in it.
I will, I will not vote to have my name on financial advice to seniors that I'm not comfortable with. And that's how I view my role, is people look to me to give them guidance. And my guidance would be go talk to your financial advisor, they're the experts, period. And I don't want to mention any of those things.
It seems to me that the positions are all clear.
There are. I believe it is.
So, what options do we have?
It's just not what we're, yeah.
So, what options do we have? So, the committee is dissolved. Is it, is it appropriate to send it back to an individual? Can we ask somebody to make another pass if they desired? Or is it something that we would have to do internally? I don't want it to be shelved and.
Where does this exist digitally? Do you know?
Well, the chair of the committee has it, but it's been sent to our office and obviously we printed some copies of them.
What options do we have procedurally moving forward?
Say it again.
What options procedurally? Like, can, can we just ask somebody to update this and send the board a new copy? Ask an individual?
Well, so, I would say this, the committee voted this report. So, I would, my recommendation is to have us empower Kate to talk to the author, assuming it's you, Roy, if it is the will, if it is the will of the board, to have reference to reverse mortgages struck from recommendations. And then, once that's done, to have it printed and distributed.
So, one challenge I think would be, this probably says done by the committee, and we'd have to, I don't think it would be appropriate to publish it in that manner if we'd made edits to it, because then we're attributing kind of our edits to their voice. Is there precedence for kind of how to navigate this?
So, the only one that I've been here for was the Memorial School Reuse Committee, where there were edits that were made to their final report after that, after that. And the committee went back and sort of redeliberated on those and made edits.
Were they dissolved or did they exist?
They still exist.
I guess they still exist, although half of the world thinks they've dissolved, so I don't know. But so, I would say, given that they're an ad hoc committee, the Tax Fairness Committee, you could perhaps charge me with reaching out to the committee and getting the band back together for one last.
I'm not sure that would be legal.
Overview, well, I mean.
Well, it's ad hoc, so they're appointed at our, they're appointed.
You're not appointing different people. It would have to be a quorum of the same. If they're, if they're unwilling to do that, I'm not, I think you would have to take the document and be very specific about what are the changes that were made by this board and not.
So, if I was in my engineering world, there'd be a page, something at the back which would say, this was changed to this by the Select Board, and that would show the original text, it would show the change text, and then.
So, why don't, why don't I recommend a motion that asks Kate and I to work on figuring out exactly the best path forward with the chair of the disbanded Tax Fairness Committee?
So, no.
And then we'll report back.
So, to reiterate the motion, it's the chair will work with Kate to work with the previous chair of the committee to kind of figure out.
How best to move forward.
How best to move forward.
I'll second.
Okay. Any just question? Hearing none, all those in favor? Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan? Aye. Okay. Kate, you get to spend more time with me. Lucky you.
It's an embarrassment of riches.
Roy will be in touch, obviously. Review of Community Preservation Committee Procedures Manual. Is it draft?
Yes, it's simply a draft. It was provided to the committee. I loosely went over it at their last meeting. I provided it to them. I had a conversation with the chair, and I think that they will be reviewing it. Again, it was, they could use as much or as little as they felt was helpful. And I know the chair, I don't want to speak for her directly, but I know that she felt that it was very helpful. I think there was some desire to have some processes codified and, you know, it's a fairly new committee, and so I am hopeful that at their next meeting, they'll take this up, provide any edits that they have. But in the meantime, if you all see any edits, because ultimately, as a policy board, it will come back here. There's nothing you need to do at this point.
Any questions for Kate? Thank you. I think this is supposed to be personnel policies.
Yes, it is, yep. It can also be personal.
Unless they're your personal policies.
So, I had sent to the board, the majority of the updates are relative to the fire, fire department or fire. department or fire division in public safety.
Yep.
As you know, the firefighters were at one point represented by the Teamsters Union. They decertified in that union about two years ago now. And, no, maybe about a year and a half now. Yep. And since then, we've been trying to catch up with some of the things that are very specific to public safety that don't necessarily fit into our general policies and procedures. And so this, this is several months and hours worth of conversations. Last week, the commissioner, Kelly and myself had a pretty lengthy meeting with the, several of the fire lieutenants. And then we had met earlier that day with the deputy chief. So I think that they are all on board with what is there. There were questions and concerns that came up that can be handled through the commissioner, through their standard operating procedures. So we are looking for a ratification of this document in its entirety. The only other portion is under special pays where we deal with equity adjustments and other adjustments in the range, including additional duties, both permanent and temporary, which we had been doing in practice but haven't codified. And this will have us be compliant with not only the federal labor standards, but the Massachusetts Equal Pay Act.
I have no concerns about it. Commissioner, anything from you?
No, I'd just like to thank everyone who was involved. As Kate said, the fire officers were involved in it. So this, this is a great representation of a document that respects the full-time and the working relationship with the call members as well. So it was, it was a great job by all and it was a pleasure to be involved with.
Any questions for Kate or the commish?
I did invest quite a bit of time, again, reading this document. A lot of hard work that went into it. I can see, my only comment is really, some of the items I just thought could go into in sort of an operations manual procedure. For example, the details that went into this about A, B, C schedules and that type of thing struck me as the kind of thing that could go into an operations manual as opposed to.
So, yeah, so anything that outlines the means and manner in which people are paid has to be represented. And it, the, basically, the standard is that any, any reasonable individual would be able to read it and understand what they're being paid for and the expectations of the essential functions. So it, it can be and likely will be more involved in a, you know, operations manual or something like that. It's, it's likely, just like we have with lots of different employee groups, that things are duplicated. But anything that is relative to pay, and in this particular case, there's a special statute that we adopted to allow for 48 hours worth of work. So that's two 24s. And so we need to be able to outline that in the personnel policies.
Okay. Yeah, that was really the only thing that jumped out at me. This was quite a comprehensive document.
Is there a motion to ratify the personnel policies and procedures?
Sima.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor. Second, I was saying, aye, Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Fall special town meeting. How fun. Who doesn't want that? Oh, by the way, Decam land passed.
That was part of this.
I know. I'm sorry. I was so excited the other day. And I, a big shout out to our state senator, John Cronin, and our state representative, Matt Kilcoyne, who literally saw this thing through to the bitter end of the last day of the legislative session. So it got through. So I know Kate is going to be working with them on those transfers so that we, we have that property and can move forward. So it's a fantastic day for Lancaster last week when this took place. And I, I offer great thanks to our legislative delegation, to Kate and those in the town government who worked with them to get that done. So well done.
And thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
So I put a memo on the table there, which these are very potential. Nothing is set in stone. The, the lines that are in the green text are still under discussion and consideration. However, potential articles include the acceptance of real property for Old Zero Common Road, which is a sale partnership agreement for Decam. We're looking to do a repeal of certain provisions of the special act, one of the special acts of 2002, which outlines the finance director covered by, essentially by a personnel contract. It's, it's very loose who that person reports to in practice. And for as long as at least Cheryl Gerapie has been here, yes, sir.
Wouldn't this be easier with a charter? Oh, sorry. Did I speak out of turn?
Yes, but in the absence.
You didn't speak out of turn. I recognize you.
In the absence of that.
Yes.
Having the finance director covered under the personnel bylaw will also be very helpful in recruiting our next finance director. Unfortunately, we can't convince Cheryl to stay any longer and she'd like to retire. So.
But there's, I'm, how convincing have you tried to be?
Pretty convincing. Yeah. I mean.
She's earned every bit of retirement.
It's true. So we have a property disposal that's in the town code. That's a separate committee. That committee is inconsistent with Mass General Law, Chapter 30B. So we need to repeal that. Could also be covered in a charter. The passage of the CPA article, which was tabled from last town meeting, which was the forest legacy monies, we've been able to work through the procurement for that and have a contract. So that would need to be taken up at town meeting. We have a different fire and public safety classification and compensation plan now that we've gotten through the meat and potatoes of the class and comp plan through the Collins Center. So that needs to be adopted. There, you will hear about this probably in September, but there is an update that is needed to the capital plan for a specific fire apparatus due to the failure of a current apparatus in a pumper truck. We need updates to the water enterprise budget as the one that was proposed prior doesn't have the current rate, water rate properly in it. And there are some other personnel changes, including some chargebacks for insurances that weren't representative on that. So those need updates. And then, of course, the three relative to Hawthorne Lane, which is the potential adoption of the public way, the acceptance of the open space gift that is currently there, and then the easements over lots nine and 10 for the water line utility. And then, lastly, the adoption of some bylaw language to mirror what we had already accepted, which was Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 57. That was adopted October 10th of 1990. However, similar to what happened with the tax abatement for veterans, there needs to be an actual written into the bylaw. So in this provision allows the planning board or the treasure collector to deny a development permit if a developer has unpaid taxes on another parcel, parcels, or properties.
Okay. Should be a fun evening.
Nothing, nothing I don't think that's widely contentious, but some, some definite housekeeping that would help us operate, absolutely.
Mr. Allison?
Yeah, I'm very motivated by the three Hawthorne Lane bills. That is a, that is unfinished business. An unfortunate sequence of events that the town.
Sorry, your time is up.
Needs to resolve. My question is for either three of those articles, are they all majority or supermajority?
Those are all majority.
It'll be 50%?
Yep.
Plus one.
Fifty plus one.
This sounds great. Scheduling.
Yeah. So in speaking with the department heads and most, especially the town clerk, we had looked at October 7th, which was a Monday, as a potential date. Certainly wanted to hear.
You already have a select board meeting that day?
Certainly wanted to hear from this board. I think any sooner than that, we would run the risk of not having things really buttoned up or vetted relative to Hawthorne Lane.
That is not the holiday Monday because that is the second Monday in our town.
The 14th is the holiday Monday. Yes. Indigenous.
People's Day. I currently am holding a first select board meeting, so.
Which day was it?
The 7th.
Monday, October 7th.
I guess I could, it could be like Ralph and check my calendar.
I was already scheduled. Already scheduled.
You likely were already scheduled.
I'm holding it, yeah. And if you weren't, shame. Shame on you if you weren't already holding it.
Wait, October 7th?
Yeah, still seven. I got nothing going on. Are you trying to schedule something down?
I'm just intimidated by how long it's taking Ralph to find October 7th. He's got a lot on his calendar.
Yeah. I think he could just jump ahead to October. You know, if you do it day by day.
Should be okay. I'll probably be in the country.
You're supposed to be here for meetings. That would be helpful.
I've tried to schedule my, my travels. I can't be here.
I wasn't as ready about this.
Okay, so October 7th. Do you need a vote?
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
Is there a motion?
Sima, October 7th.
What time? Seven o'clock?
Yes.
At the school.
And I just make sure I'm hearing correctly. That's October 7.
Correct.
Yes.
Of the, of the year 2024.
Yes. Now, again, the next is to make sure we have the school.
Hold on two seconds.
Okay.
We have a motion. We don't have a second.
Oh, second. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So you got yourself a meeting 7:00 PM on the 7th of October at the school. What's your next question?
I have to confirm it with the school.
Okay, got it. Can you let us know if you need to change that date?
Worst thing tomorrow.
There are some holidays on October 7th. It's National Propane Day.
Oh, right.
World Architecture Day.
I do celebrate Architecture Day.
Margot Stemsil and Bill Marrow Awareness Day.
Oh, that's nice.
And National Inner Beauty Day.
Oh, that's nice. I'm gonna, we should celebrate National Inner Beauties Day at the special times.
The only beauty I got.
Your words, not mine. Okay.
How does one celebrate that?
Just, I don't know, smile inside. I don't know. Okay.
Dress all in mirrors.
It's inner beauty. It's not about.
Dress as a skeleton.
So, okay. Next. Select board policies discussion tabled from 7:15:24.
I would like to table again.
I, you don't have to give me a reason. I love tabling.
Can we review what's open?
Off the.
Kate had directed, backed great work drafting changes.
We've just had so much on our plate. I've read through it. I think there's a lot of great changes.
We can table.
But there's just so much other stuff that we've been plowing our way through.
Do you have an objection to tabling?
No, no, no. I just don't want to forget about it. So, okay, I'm good.
Okay. Tabled. Select board goal continued from 7:15:24.
I would also like to refer this for the next meeting.
Okay.
But under that, I was hoping I would be able to bring up.
Yes. So while we're on the topic, we will table the part sponsored by Ralph. Kate, you would like to offer some comments?
Yes. So I can hand out these and I will display this on the board.
So colorful.
So this is not meant to overshadow anything that Ralph is, is doing. However, when it was first brought up, I had just said that there is a process that we had been doing for a couple of years as a team, as a management team here. And short of any directive to stray from that, I was going to continue through. So given that the budget objectives for FY26 are due out to the staff in a matter of days, we held our first management goal-setting meeting where we went over a number of different goals. And so as you can see here with this very colorful portion.
My favorite page is page two. Want to know what's my favorite page?
It's blank.
No, because I'm colorblind. But you, you give.
You're colorblind?
Yeah. So I love color-coded things. At least I can see the name. I don't know what color it is. So sometimes people say the yellow is for this, but at least you have mule. I'm not being, I'm not kidding. Mule is to this color. So I know that.
So, so in all seriousness, so you're colorblind and this is accessible?
It is. I just, usually when the color, when you have color charts, people say the red means this, the purple means this, the orange means this. And I don't know which ones those are. This just says Hodges is that. So I can match that to the other. The struggle is real, folks, for colorblind people. That and left-handed people. I got.
Commissioner, disability is going to be so impressed with this conversation. I cannot wait to get home and tell them.
Thank you very much.
Anywho, so I'm, I'm glad that that's all worked out. So, so these are.
Although the tone and moody look a lot alike. So I'm. Not this.
On paper.
Keep going.
So we have several in administration, several in finance, health and human services, planning and economic development, public safety, public works and facilities, and then IT. And so as you can see, the assignments of who either has been assigned that goal or whose goal that was is over in the accessible codes. This year, we had the benefit of having the new updated comprehensive master plan. And so what we did was to devise our own goals and objectives this year first. And then I went back and was able to go through the master plan and pull out all of the simplified goals that are in that document. And so those are here in the third page. And so the point being is that if there are goals on page two that are objectives and goals of a town department that don't necessarily align with the goals and objectives of the town, then we know that we're not barking up the right tree for FY26 in particular, but likely 27 and 28 realistically. And so from there, we came up with categories. So each of the goals in the master plan fall into at least one, if not more, of the themes. So the theme of land use, this is a picture of Spec Pond. Housing, this is Decam. Economic development, this is the outside of Kimball's. Natural and cultural resources, this is the library. And in particular, focus on the museum wing. Open space and recreation is Dexter Drumlin. Sustainability and resilience, this is the sunset at Prescott. And then public service and facilities, and this is aerial view of the old townhome. So again, given that, staff then took their department-level goals and reviewed each of them again to ensure they're fit within one of these themes, if not more. And those that didn't reasonably connect to one of the above were placed aside for further review and vetting. So this is just an example of what the pages will look like as we go through them. And this is obviously phase two of the staff level. But we will have land use. So we're going to be using the same graphics throughout the books pages for consistency. And so we basically want to redefine the inherent need within the theme of the master plan and the specific objectives that are relative to it. And then down below, we'd have a reiteration of the townwide goals as in the master plan and then a reference to where those goals can be found and what pages. And then the department-specific. So basically, the department objectives, once complete, would work to satisfy one, if not multiple, of the townwide goals in the master plan. And so that's how we are working forward. We were obviously able to do one for land use. This is the example for housing. So for us, housing is really surrounding our efforts at Decam, which is for redevelopment with somewhere in the neighborhood of 198 housing units that are there between single-family apartment style, some commercial space for lifestyle businesses, senior and disabled, and then townhouses with some affordable and some deeply affordable, which is a goal of the Affordable Housing Trust. So I just wanted to bring this up because I think as you navigate, whatever this new aspect of it is going to be, you know, we, we have a need to move forward so that we can understand. can understand what we need to allocate in terms of dollars to be able to do some of these things, if not all of these things. And so we're really, you know, interested in making sure that the board is aware of, of our process and, and what we're doing as we did the last couple of years, and hopefully get your, your blessing.
What would be helpful for us, I mean, first of all, this is fantastic, so thank you. And I'm sincere when I say thank you on that color coding. As this develops, I'm assuming we'll see more of it.
Yes.
Would it be helpful for us to take a look and a deep dive, and then just give you any thoughts, either individually or at the next meeting, just about some substance or direction, is that helpful, or?
Yes, yeah. I mean, mostly the concern is clearly there's another path that Ralph is, wants to take, is taking. Not understanding that completely, I, I don't want to charge the staff with doing all of this and then saying, but we're not going to follow it.
I think the first, the staff-level goals and how they connect to the master plan are critical in the first, well, that's the first two pages. That's why I would ask if we could all take a deep, hard look at this and then either, if there's emergent need, get back to Kate, ceasing the, before our next meeting. Otherwise, let's make sure, if you have any, like additional stuff for the next meeting, send it to us, and then we'll just have a more in-depth conversation.
I agree, yeah. This, this will be, this will be excellent support.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree. I don't need to look at it anymore. This mimics my Lancaster Bible, which is the town master plan.
Well, I mean, it doesn't go on, doesn't have-
As I'm saying, is basically the first, the first two or three pages is really just the lines of our town master plan, which is the plan, which, you know, maybe, I thought about our last meeting, and maybe I do a bad job of communicating how I approach, how I do my job, which is really geared toward Lancaster master plan, Lancaster economic development plan, that guides me in, in all of this, so, yeah, I don't really get it, it's perfect.
I, yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, given we only have two of those two categories, that I thought it might be helpful on the staff to give them additional guidance as the materials come forward. I agree with you, first two pages are fantastic.
Do you want to change the colors, would that be helpful?
No, the colors are fantastic, don't ask me to name them, they're fantastic. It's just the following, the following, we just have land use and housing, and I'm very excited about the others.
Yes, there will be more.
I feel like you have guidance, yes?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we accept the resignation of Conservation Commission member Brad McGregor.
Just a point of order, Bruce McGregor?
One more time?
Yeah.
Bruce McGregor.
Bruce.
So his close friends call him Brad.
That is not true. If the chair will indulge me for a couple of moments.
I've already indulged you plenty, but yeah, sure.
For the residents-
Like, if I didn't indulge you, you wouldn't talk.
So for the residents listening, Bruce McGregor is probably a name y'all don't hear very often.
Especially since it's Brad.
But when I, when I saw the resignation come up, I was like, oh, what happened? If y'all don't know, Bruce is, is, you know, worked with the scouts for, for many, many years, and then came on to the Conservation Commission, and is just a super valued asset, and he's not, what would the term be to describe maybe boisterous people like myself?
He's-
Annoying? No. Uh, he is, he is, he is a doer, and, you know, I saw his, saw the resignation, and he's like, you know, wanting, you know, put a good amount of time in, want to give an opportunity for someone else to come in and get on, get on the board. Anyway, I just want to say Bruce, thank you. And for all the residents, if you see Bruce, thank him, because he's in, he's in the background doing a lot of good work for the town, and I'm just grateful for it, thank you.
And also, his alter ego Brad has done equally great work for the town and deserves our support. Thank you to both of you, Bruce and Brad. But in all seriousness, thanks Bruce for your service to the town. If you know Jason as well as he suggests, you do need a break, so I totally understand. Take some, we all deserve a time off. And thank you again. Anything else? So is there a motion to accept Bruce McGregor's?
You don't actually have to do that.
Oh, wait, no, we acknowledged him, sorry. Do we acknowledge? Do you acknowledge it? But do you though?
Yes, sir.
Ralph, do you acknowledge it?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
Would you like a second to the acknowledgement?
No, I think we're all acknowledged, we've got thirds on that. Appointments. Speaking of Conservation Commission, term specified after name, so there's an applicant, Carl Fawcett, for said Conservation Commission term to expire 6/30/2027. Carl was a candidate the last time when we had an open spot and spoke to us, and-
So moved?
Do.
Second?
Any discussion? Thank you Carl for your willingness to serve. All those in favor, second whip is saying aye. Ralph?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Community preservation. This is just to acknowledge, right? We don't have to-
Ratify.
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 The Recreation Commission has sent us their representative, which is Mark, Mark Renshawski, for the Community Preservation Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, second whip is saying aye. Ralph?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Miss Lanes' Correspondence and Memorandum? None, sounds good. Town offices will be closed on Labor Day. Next select board meeting will be, so this is the, exactly, it's the same day as, as the primary we just approved, so that would mean the next, uh, so typically, and I'm saying this in case any planning board person is paying attention, typically we're the first and third. The first is Labor Day, so we would have to move to the ninth, which conflicts with the planning board, unless we did something on like the fourth. Because we would be then the second and the 16th, we're counted as the second. What is the body's wish on scheduling?
See if I'll be in the country, hold on.
Yeah, he's got to check his. You were just in October, just go back about-
When I said country, I meant the county.
So I will be, again, completely after, in the last week of this month.
Okay, but this is the first week of next month.
Oh, next month?
Yeah.
Sorry. I should be fine.
So I, is Kate, tell me, is the fourth a terrible idea?
Friday?
Nope, that's the fourth of September is Wednesday.
Nope, it's, it is not a terrible idea and avoids the planning board.
Exactly. So my suggestion would be if it's okay with my board, if they're all in the country or on the right month, which goes to both views, that we have our next meeting on September the 4th at 6:00 PM in this very room.
Works for me.
Ralph?
Yeah, I am scheduled to be in Europe, but I-
Oh, Jason, you just said you were back.
Uh, I was thinking anyway. Yeah, I hadn't looked far enough.
You can zoom in, it'll just be-
But I haven't actually bought any tickets, I'll rearrange, no problem.
If you want to buy tickets for all of us, we can have a road trip in Europe, I don't think we can do that, but that's fine. Uh, okay. Also, you don't get demerits if you don't attend every meeting, if you have to, we understand people have lives and have businesses, so. Okay, September 4th.
Yes.
Got it. Uh, and now, we, I will seek a motion to enter-
Move a select board meeting-
Oh? One more time?
There was no new business, right?
No, there is, sorry. Thank you. There's an item of new business that occurred to me prior to the, the agenda being done, which is relative to you.
Yes.
Kate Irene Hodges, in that we have to notify Kate by September whether we wish to enter negotiations to do a new contract with her. So welcome to the land awkward. I would like us to, and then empower one of our colleagues to begin negotiating on behalf of the board and work with us on that. As you negotiate, I believe I was on the board when she was hired, you negotiated the first contract, my recommendation to this body would be to notify Kate of our interest in beginning negotiations for a renewed contract, and ask Jason to serve as the principal negotiator that will then work with the body on deal points, et cetera, or I guess if we want to continue with the conversation.
Works for me.
Okay. Okay.
Does it require a motion?
I would like one. Now, keep in mind, this is to have contract negotiations. Either party can, they're contract negotiations, until things are signed, everything's on the year. But I would like one because I think it sends a good message both to our employee and to this body that we intend to move forward, and to the staff that works with our employee, what we intend to at least embark upon. So I'd like a motion that we indicate to Kate Hodges that we have interest in renewing contract, and that select person Allison is assigned to be the principal negotiator for the select board. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion since I've named you in it, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, second whip is saying aye. Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Thank you.
A question that might also constitute a business?
Oh, sure.
I understand there was a 100K payment that was due, that should be due, in association with the LLC project up McGovern Boulevard. What is the status of that?
When did you learn about this?
Recently, I-
Within, within 48 hours?
48 hours?
Yes, I think so.
Uh, okay, so where did you learn, I mean, what are you, what are you asking about?
Do we know anything about that payment, whether there was an intent to go through with that? Where does that stand?
I don't know anything about a payment.
I don't either, so why don't we add it to an actual agenda? Because if it was part of a deal a long time ago, this wouldn't constitute new business, but, but we could certainly dig, if you can tell us more details or tell Kate, we can dig into it.
So I don't know about a payment. If there is a payment, I'd like to know about it, so I'd like to ask you, how did you learn about this payment?
I was brought to my attention by a voter who reviews contracts, paperwork, et cetera.
Anonymous voter?
Voter who emailed me, I don't, I, I would like to talk with him before mentioning his name.
Fair enough, okay. So concerned resident emailed you directly, did not email anybody else on the board.
Okay.
Good. Something for the board considering that situation is, you might consider just talking to Kate directly?
Yeah.
Because, you know, an open session, I mean, I feel a little surprised. I know that wasn't your intention.
No, no.
If you are right, I feel like I'm, I've missed something, and that, you know, I know that's not your intention, but.
I certainly did not wish to put anybody in, and I go through this, yeah.
Okay, and to be very clear on what constitutes new business is there, has to be an understanding that the item came up so close to this meeting that it was unreasonable to allow us time in 48 hours to amend the agenda to add.
Yeah, that's what I asked for.
That is what new business is, and the Kate piece I was reminded of today, and then I thought, oh, darn it, we didn't have that to the agenda. I had intended to, and, so here we are, but I didn't want to wait till September because we had to give an answer by then. All right, is our motion entered executive session?
I move the select board to meet in executive session pursuant to MGL, Chapter 38, 21A, for the following purposes. Aye. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general, of special law or federal grant in aid requirement. Purpose seven, specifically as it relates to open meeting law GL, Chapter 38, 22FG, and for the purpose of discussing and approving the select board executive session minutes from 6:30, 24, 6:25, 24, 7:1, 24, 7:15, 24, and 7:24, 24.